City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Winn. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
8 to 0.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the January 25, 2016, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements. I have several. It's Black History Month, whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who worked in Kentucky coal mines as a child and was the son of former slaves, proposed and launched a week-long celebration of the individuals and occasions having a significant impact on African-American history in America. And whereas Dr. Woodson chose the month of February to conduct this commemoration, because the birthdays of two men whose actions have significantly affected African-Americans in this country are in February, namely Frederick Douglass, the gifted orator, writer, and statesman, who was a tireless advocate of the anti-slavery movement, and Abraham Lincoln, a native son of Kentucky, who signed the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas African-American History Month was originally founded to be the second week of February, and at its inception was named Negro History Week, and was expanded to a month with the name changed to African-American History Month during a convention of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and Culture in the 1970s, with the association also changing its name at that time to the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas during the month of February 2016, across the United States of America, observances will be held to increase public awareness of the importance of Black History and the contributions that African-Americans have made toward their country. And whereas the citizens of Evanston should recommit themselves to an ideal America where equality and justice will always prevail, and to the principles of love, wisdom, understanding, and compassion toward one another. And whereas the respect that fellow citizens have for one another determines the value of any country. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the city of Evanston, do hereby proclaim February 2016 as Black History Month in the city of Evanston, and do hereby urge citizens of this great city to be mindful of the contributions of African-Americans and of all its citizens throughout the year. And Ms. Wilkerson, would you please come forward, and I will give you a proclamation.
While the mayor is getting back to her seat, I certainly want to thank you and the city council for -- it is a pleasure for me to accept this on behalf of all of the citizens of Evanston. And I'd like to invite everybody to attend the kickoff for Black History Month, which is going to be February 6 at Fleetwood Jordan Theater, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. And everybody's invited, not just African-Americans, but all the citizens of Evanston. We look forward to seeing you there and at other events that will be scheduled.
Thank you very much. I have another announcement from Wally. I asked him what I could say tonight about how he's doing. He says we are doing great. Baby Wally is sleeping well. I have become an expert on diapering. I wonder who else thinks he's an expert. Patrice is feeling good. Thanks for the note. And I have a picture to pass around. And the other good news is Rodney Green was here for a couple hours today. And the other good news is that he went home after a couple of hours, as the doctor had advised. And lastly, please give me your suggestions. Apparently, I should be appointing an Aldermanic and Merrill Compensation Committee. And so, yes, it's that time. Apparently, it popped up on the computer. And so, if you have people, names to suggest, please let me know. And that concludes my report.
These are non-Aldermen, correct, Madam Mayor?
I was asked if an Alderman could participate. And Michelle, I'm sure you don't know, but maybe you could find out for us.
I will.
If so, I nominate Alderman Rainey.
I'll second.
All right. All right, Alderman Rainey.
And call the question.
If I have the ability to appoint you, I will, but I don't know if I can.
Madam Mayor? My concern has always been about this committee, is that it's usually a committee not very connected to the council or city business. And I just always thought that they needed some feedback from Aldermen, not necessarily as a member of the committee, but some interaction with council members.
Well, I agree with you, and I will ask committee members to please schedule a time to talk with council members about what they do. But, you know, no committee would be able to believe what it is that we all do. But I think that's a very good point, and I will ask them to do that. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, deputy clerk. I would like to introduce Vicky Posenko from the Evanston Animal Shelter Association. She would like to talk a little bit about Tales in Bloom Gala with some of her special friends that are with her tonight.
A very special friend here. Good evening. My name is Vicky Posenko, and I'm here representing the Evanston Animal Shelter. Thank you for inviting us to speak to you about our upcoming Tales in Bloom Gala. The event will take place on February 6 at the Noyes Cultural Center. We have a very special evening planned with wine bar, entertainment, and live and silent auctions. But before I talk about the event itself, I want to spend a couple of minutes talking about my friend Rosie, because she so fully represents the concept of Tales in Bloom, and she is an example of how we spend a large portion of the money that is donated to us. Rosie was found wandering in the alley in South Evanston, and was brought to us by a concerned citizen. When she came to us, she was not the happy, healthy dog that you see in front of you today. She was dirty. She had mats in her fur. In fact, I think you said it took an hour for them to trim her fur when she first was groomed. She had ear infections, which have left her partially deaf. And she had a mammary tumor that was malignant. So, we got Rosie the medical care that she needed. We cleaned her up, got her groomed. And when it was time for her to have her surgery, we needed someone to take care of her while she recuperated. And that's where Sandy Rogers came in. Sandy is a long-term volunteer at the shelter, and she normally fosters cats. So, she said, you know, "I'll take this dog home and let her get well at my house." And when she fosters cats, she specializes in scared and semi-feral kittens mostly. Rosie didn't fit that bill, but it was okay. But the problem was that she became a foster failure, as we call it, when it came to Rosie. And it became clear right away that she was going to hang on to her. So Rosie's been with her ever since. Rosie continues to get regular checkups, and so far, she's cancer-free, and we're hoping that it stays that way. She has become an ambassador for the shelter. She often goes to events like this and represents the shelter at those events. So, she also has become very helpful in the kitten fostering business. She makes them feel very safe and loved when they come to her house. So, it has indeed been a very special event, watching Rosie bloom. And that brings us to the Tales in Bloom Gala, where we'll be raising money so that we can help other dogs and cats in the same way that we've helped Rosie. She's just one example of the animals whose lives have been changed when they come to the shelter. And we'll use this event as a fundraiser and also as a celebration of our animals. Here are some highlights of what you will experience if you come to the gala. You can pose for photos that will be taken by the Bordeaux Studio in our red carpet area. You'll enjoy a creative wine cocktail bar with imported wines from the bottle shop. You'll savor delicious dishes from local restaurants such as Union, Farmhouse, and The Cellar. You'll be serenaded by Evanston's own cellist, Martin Nosedell, and the violinist, Tara Lynn Ramsey. You'll have the chance to compete for a variety of items on our silent and live auction. We have more than 40 items on the silent auction, and they include things like pet-related packages, wine tastings, gift certificates from several local restaurants, art, jewelry, and much, much more. The live auction includes the bigger-ticket items. And among those are a handmade bench that was made by a local craftsman. And the biggest item is a trip for two to Las Vegas, that includes $600 in airfare credit, three-night stay at the Red Rock Resort, spa, dining, limo credits, and two tickets for shows at the Tropicana. So you don't want to miss that, for sure. The evening's events will be guided by James Anthony Zakoli, who some of you may know. He's from Evanston, and he has a local radio show called The Game Show Show and Stuff. I'm not familiar with it, but a lot of people are. The VIP registration allows you to arrive an hour early, so you get the first chance to bid on the silent auction items and exclusive access to chocolates by Peron and premium wines and cheese. Doors open for VIP guests at 6:00 and for regular-ticket holders at 7:00. As a special thank you for having invited us here to speak about this today, we've set up a special promotion code, so people can use that promo code to get a discount on their tickets. So, if you go from today through next Sunday, the 31st, to our website and enter the promotion code COUNCIL, C-O-U-N-C-I-L, all caps, then you'll get $50 off the purchase price of a ticket. So, thank you very, very much for inviting us here, Rosie especially, to talk about the gala, and I hope we'll see all of you there. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. City Manager?
That is all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, do you have communications?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I am told we think that everyone who signed up to speak about the Northwestern University scoreboard has spoken. Is there anyone in that group who is still here and wants to speak again? All right. Then it would be Junad Rizki and Carlos Sutton would be next.
At the last council meeting, I pointed out how the city manager misrepresented he could build Walt Robert Crown for free, when in reality it would cost the taxpayers millions. Let's talk again about another misrepresentation, the city's water utility. It has been claimed we would have millions in new water sales. None have shown up. We can't even really have a real financial picture of this either. I recently reviewed the bid package on the water tank. Another mess. It appears Northwestern University has major input in setting the scope of this water tank project. How many millions of dollars will this cost us extra, more money that shouldn't have been spent? And what excuses will the city staff come up with for this tank when it overruns? Who at the city is responsible for running this project, really running it, not just old Mr. Stonebeck or some of the water department? Who actually runs this project, a $20 million job? It appears to me the city bid the engineering without a firm scope. This council should demand, before final construction documents start, that they review the project for cost. Because basically, what's in this package is you're going to do is a scope, you're going to basically come up with a scope. And that's not the right way to even do business. The mayor claims that this needed to be done. The reality is Northwestern wants this tank moved around on that site, and it wants it readjusted to make their campus look good at the north end. I recently asked about ownership of the beach there in front of the tank, which IDNR stated Northwestern does not own in a letter. So I'm curious what meetings have transpired on this, and we have not gotten an answer back. The city is proceeding rebuilding Sheridan Road in front of Northwestern's campus at a cost of $10 million or more. And really, how messed up is this project? Because when we started this, the utilities were not considered, and it had to be stopped. The council appears to not really understand these capital projects at all. Northwestern University seems to understand that we have a problem, because when we did the Lincoln Street project, who did the engineering? Northwestern University did the engineering for the city. That's interesting, that the university would do engineering for a city street project, and then basically, we would fund that project. Very interesting. The water utility costs us a lot of money, and I believe because of many of these mistakes, we are carrying a lot of extra, basically, millions of dollars probably in extra costs due to the borrowing. And it brings me to Harley Clark again. Some council members and the mayor claim that we can't afford to build this. Yet we can afford to waste millions, really, on all these mistakes. And this really, for any taxpayer, is of great concern. The tabling of Harley Clark by certain public officials was really an uncivil act that was politically motivated and not cost-motivated at all. Because really, Harley Clark is peanuts in the equation of things here that's going on. I think it's very hypocritical that you stop this tiny project, and all the time you allow millions of dollars to be looked at, misused, and not even looked at properly. And now you might want more compensation. You're looking for more compensation, that you do something correct. Well, I've never heard anyone up here question anything. They just allow staff to continue to spend our money frivolously. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Sutton left. Next would be Betty Esther, Devon Reed, Alex Bisek, and Matt Faden.
Good evening to the city council members and the citizens at home. I'm extending you an invitation to the Citizens Network of Protection, February 16 meeting at Fleetwood Jordan Center at 7:00 p.m. We will be discussing our ongoing work of establishing and a citizen review board, primarily police. Please join us and give us your thoughts. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor.
I forgot to say, state your name, please.
My name is Devon Malcolm Reed. Again, good evening, Mayor Tisdall, Deputy City Clerk, and then members of the city council. I'm here again. I came December 14 to begin a discussion about reducing Evanston's food waste. I told you guys about our event, and we had it, and we had a great turnout. And we had people from, we had young people from 16, 15, 16, all the way up to 64 come out to our event and talk about reducing food waste here in Evanston. We partnered with Campus Kitchens and Northwestern Points for a Purpose and the Northwestern Graduates Group. We had students from ETHS' Emerge Program. We had private businesses such as 0%, Collective Resource, nonprofits such as Evanston Food Exchange, the Citizens Climate Lobby, and then the Evanston Rebuilding Warehouse come out and begin a discussion. And we just really want to get it on your radar, that we're serious about this, that we're going to continue working for this issue. And we want to create a pragmatic, smart policy that doesn't necessarily penalize businesses for not, for throwing food away, but incentivizes them to get more food on plates and composting. So we have some people, some young people who are doing great work here in the city, and we'll let them talk as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
How's it going? My name is Matt Faden. I'm a sophomore at Northwestern University, and I am the co-president of Points for a Purpose. So we are a student organization that is dedicated to fighting and ultimately ending food insecurity and hunger in Evanston and Cook County, and with an ultimate goal for the entire country. We are a chapter of Swipe Out Hunger, which is a national nonprofit organization that has 15 chapters across different universities in the United States. Each of their missions is also dedicated to fighting food insecurity. So the way that we tackle this issue on our campus is by engaging with the Northwestern student body. So students that are on meal plans have meal points that they're able to spend on campus for food. At the end of each quarter, there are excess meal points that students aren't able to spend before they go to waste. We are here to allow them to donate the points to us, and every single point donated goes towards providing a meal for food insecure individuals in Evanston and Cook County. Now, although food insecurity has been the main, primary concern of our organization, something that fits right within that is food waste. Food insecurity is defined as when an individual does not have reliable access to a sufficient quantity of healthy, nutritious, and affordable food. And to me, I see a really big issue where we have 30% to 40% of all food in the United States that goes to waste, where that food could be accessible to individuals that are food insecure. So the primary part of the definition that I think we're able to address is accessibility. And I think that it is totally plausible in our community to have a huge portion of that percentage go towards individuals in need. We recently met at Coffee Lab on Noye Street with Plates Over Waste to discuss initial groundwork in potentially having an ordinance of some type to address food waste. And Points for a Purpose, and I could also speak for Swipe Out Hunger, would totally be in support of this ordinance. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jing Li, and I'm a junior at Northwestern University. So as Matt mentioned just now, I'm currently part of an organization called Campus Kitchens. And we're basically a nonprofit organization at Northwestern that aims to combat food insecurity and hunger by collecting leftover food from various food businesses and dining halls in Evanston, dining halls on campus, and basically redistributing these to needy people in the community. And so we have over 400 clients in Evanston. And these include individuals, homeless individuals, and we also have partnerships with various social services, social service agencies, homeless shelters, churches. And last year, we actually collected food and redistributed it, over 38,000 meals to all these clients. So I think the problem of hunger and food insecurity is really an issue of redistributing food. It's not so much that there isn't enough food to go around, but that people who actually need the food are not getting the food. So this is a problem that can be really just simply solved if we redistribute food from businesses and other, let's say, campus dining halls that have a lot of these surplus food. And by redistributing these to our clients, you can really have a huge impact on the issue of food waste and food insecurity. So I think that with this ordinance that Plates Over Waste hopes to pass, which would provide an incentive for restaurants to donate their leftover food, we can really have a very big impact in bringing food to people who need it, and just have a big impact on the issue of food insecurity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Alec Beaser. I'm a volunteer at Citizens Climate Lobby, a very fresh new volunteer, actually. I was at that Coffee Lab meeting just the other day. And although I'm not the head of an organization, and I have limited work in the field of composting and food rescue and food donation, I guess my biggest purpose here would be to serve as a testimony to the passion of the people that were really at that meeting. I know at best, right here, what we can do tonight is put this issue on the agenda. And to say that there are people who are extremely passionate and hardworking and have already made, you know, great strides in this capacity is an understatement, really. I mean, the people that were there, they were entrepreneurs, they were, you know, engineers, they were creators, I mean, innovators, really, in this field of, you know, donation and volunteer work, and sort of getting excess food to the people who need it, and turning food scraps into compost, and all the, you know, the numerous benefits that come from something like that. So I don't have any hard facts for anybody here, not yet, anyway. I plan to do a lot in that respect, but just to serve as a testament to the people that really want this issue to be pushed forward and to get more publicity than it does and more attention than it does. And, you know, I hope to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Naia Singh of Evanston High signed up to speak, but she had to go to water polo practice. So we did have an Evanston High School speaker as well.
That's the problem with the city council meetings when they, you know, when the committee meetings go late, and a high school student, they have a curfew and they have other things on the agenda at night. So, but thank you for mentioning that.
You're welcome. All right, that concludes public citizen comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Approval of the regular city council meeting of January 11, approval is requested. The Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening, and we ask for your approval of the payroll through January 10, $2,727,586.14. The bills through January 26, $1,420,590.37. And through January 26, also for this year, $2,295,645.63. Committee asks your approval of a sole-source purchase of 30 TASER units from TASER International. The total estimated purchase price is $60,072.65.
Excuse me, Alderman Rainey. Acting City Manager would like to...
I apologize, Alderman Rainey. The amended amount for the 2016 bill, and so, $2,293,905.25.
I'm moving that amount. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Want to mention that the TASER units are being purchased from Narcotic Seizure Reserve money, and there's a giant remaining balance there. 3.2, we ask your approval of tennis instruction contract renewal with E-Town Tennis, Inc., who's been with us for quite a while, for the Recreation Division's youth and adult tennis programs. Approval is also requested for the 2016 CIPP Sewer Rehab Contract A with In situ Form Technologies USA LLC in the amount of $192,026.30. We ask approval for the Acela PAL Maintenance and Support Contract Renewal. This is the final renewal, the city's 10-year contract, in the amount of $128,362.82. This is for licensing and permitting activities in several departments. Approval is requested for auditing services, a new contract, four-year contract with Sicket LLP in the amount of $348,287. The first-year cost is $83,251. We're being asked to approve up to $10,000 for additional services and completing the comprehensive annual financial report, which you refer frequently as KEPPRA. Resolution 2, R16, easement agreement with 1571 Maple Avenue LLC is requested. This is for the construction of concrete caissons to serve as structural support for mixed-use building to be constructed at this address. We ask your approval also for the appointment of Eleanor Revell as Seventh Ward Alderman to replace the wonderful Alderman Jane Grover, who retired. Next is Resolution 6, R16, off the consent agenda, I beg your pardon. A6, A7, and I believe A8 should be off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair.
Thank you.
A9. Ordinance 1016 is for action tonight, increases the number of Class D liquor licenses for the boiling point, doing business as Peppercorn's Kitchen, 620 Davis Street, raising the number of licenses to 50. Ordinance 2016 increases the number of Class D licenses for BU properties, doing business as Cocinita at 1625 Chicago Avenue. This raises the license now to 51. And that is for action. Ordinance 16215, a 30-day grace period for the Evanston Wheel Tax and Renewal Deadline change to December 31. That's for action also. Planning and Development Committee met this evening, and we request your approval for a contract renewal for open... a contract renewal for open communities for the 2016 Landlord Tenant Program in the amount of $37,500. This is for a contract through December 31, 2016.
Please remove P2, please.
Yes, no, I will. P2 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance 10016, granting a special use for a baseball scoreboard at Rocky Miller Park and a softball scoreboard at Sharon Drysdale Field at 1501 Central. Madam Mayor and council, this is for introduction. Oh, it's not off the consent agenda. Ordinance 6016 is for action and grants major zoning relief to convert 44 rooming house units to dwelling units with no additional parking at 860 Hinman Avenue. Additional condition being requested also by our staff is that we would allow, that they would allow building trash dumpsters to occupy two on-site parking space units until August 2017. I think we're going to have to remove this one. It got a little confusing, and I'm not sure if Mr. Munz...
He asked that it be held.
Be held, okay. There was some confusion as to the writing of the item that has to do with truck rental. All right, so we're going to hold that in committee. The Rules Committee met recently and requests that you approve Resolution 8R16, proposed revision to the City Council Rule 9.2, 9.5, 16.4, and the deletion of Section 24. That's for approval. Resolution 9R16 dissolves the City Chamber Liaison Committee and repeals Resolution 25R93. That's for action. Madam Mayor has no recommendations for committees, and therefore I move the consent agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fiss.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Eight to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Miller, would you walk us through Administration and Public Works?
Yes, tonight, items A6, this is Resolution 6R16, which is approving a settlement or settlement agreement with advanced disposal. Item A7, which is Resolution 7R16, which is approving a host agreement with advanced disposal. And item A8, Ordinance 8016, which is repeal of prior waste transfer station fee ordinances. These were all held, I'm sorry, deferred or held at the meeting. So they're off the agenda, and then they'll be heard at the next AP&amp;W meeting.
All right, thank you. Does that complete ANPW?
Yes.
All right, Alderman Tendem, Planning and Development.
Do I need to...
Madam Chair, we still had one more item on that, right? Did you pull all three?
Yes.
Did that cover the two or three?
Three.
All three? Okay, thanks.
He pulled six, seven, and eight.
Thank you.
We good? Okay.
Do I need to address P5 again, or is it just, we removed it to hold it?
Yeah, just hold it.
Okay. Do I need a second?
You got P2.
What about, are we on P2 or P5?
P2. Oh, I'm sorry.
Alderman Miller?
Yeah, just really quickly, this...
Let me introduce...
Sorry.
Ordinance P2. City staff recommends adoption of Ordinance 11016 to modify the location of the previously approved 70-foot-high concrete plant building where a maximum of 60, height of 60 feet, is allowed in the I-3 general industrial district for Ozinga RMC at 2525 Oakton. City staff found the revised proposal meets all standards for variations. This is for introduction.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce Ordinance 11016. Alderman Miller?
Just really quickly, we previously approved the actual variance in height for this, and what I actually was going to do was have significant improvements to their processing, where it would enclose a lot of open-air processing before for concrete, which was great. This one actually just changed the site and actually creates a better traffic flow. So I'm very happy with Ozinga's efforts to improve the quality of their manufacturing process. This will hopefully cut down on some truck idling time and sound and some of the problems with the layout of the site from before. So I'm very happy to see this happen and very supportive of it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. It's for introduction. City clerk, would you call the roll on Ordinance 11016?
Alderman Fiss.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Eight to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Tendem?
As I jumped to the gun and mentioned, P5, Ordinance 154015, zoning ordinance, text amendment, addition of rentals to the automobile and recreational vehicle sales use is, we are putting it on hold to clarify and amend some of the text of the, for the ordinance. So this will be on hold tonight and come back on the next full council meeting.
All right, thank you very much. Good work, everybody. We are at Call of the Wards. Alderman Fiss.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
Just congratulations, Wally and Patrice, and Catherine Hurley and her husband, and then no report.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
I would just like to add to what Mary Wilkerson said about Black History Month. There's a kickoff at Fleetwood on the 6th. And during these times in our country, I think it's a really good thing we all come together to celebrate. There will be a number of events throughout the month, ending with the African-American Achievement Awards at the high school on February 26. So just check your calendars, lots of events coming up for the month of February as we celebrate Black History Month in the city of Evanston.
Thank you very much. Alderman Tendem?
No report tonight, Madam.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I just want to congratulate Devon and the people who were with him regarding food scarcity and waste. I heard an item on CNN the other day about pediatricians saying that, you know, usually when, in the past, when a kid comes into the doctor's office, the doctor says, "So how you doing, you know, what are you playing?" And now they actually keep food in the office and ask, "Is the child hungry?" Because that's so frequently their answer, that they are hungry. So I think it's really, really important that we support these kids. And want to brag about Kale Burger, the amazing Kale Burger in the 700 block of Howard. He has been advertising that he has gotten his weekly garbage down to, you know, the regular-size white kitchen plastic bags, to half of that for a week for his entire business.
Wow.
Which I'm very impressed by.
That's incredible.
That's amazing.
I'm trying, I can't do that myself.
At my house.
Alderman Miller?
I have my next ward meeting scheduled on Thursday, February 4th at 7:00 PM at the Levy Center. Thanks, that's all.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion for us?
I do. Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiles statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation in minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. The exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A, C11, and C21.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.